I'm gonna let the Lions and Cochran take over here. Talking about the consolidated water main plan. Give you some details on what you signed up for and are paying for and how this will improve the city.
You don't have to talk with that.
We've got some information.
By office in number five.
You could have made that bigger.
I can barely see you at the moment.
You know, I can still drive that truck. More like a speedboat. Now, that was good. Come on now. So while everybody's getting out the information, let's provide a quick recap. As Happy said, we're talking about the water system during earlier this year. We were engaged to prepare an owner supervised program for the city, which I'm sure we're using to prepare a capital improvement plan for your water distribution system. And outlines the projects to get done. Just a quick recap on what the owner supervised program is. This is an engineering report we prepare and submit and approve through MoDNR. Any projects identified in the supervised program, I say that any water main replacement projects identified in the supervised program do not have to be separately permitted through DNR. As I said previously, we're using this program to prepare a capital improvement program for the city. So identifying projects, putting together associated costs, and then also trying to prioritize the project. Our goal is that this will help the city in annual budgeting for water system improvements. This will also allow the city staff to complete some of these smaller projects without any additional engineering or permitting. So the projects we've identified, you've got in front of you, these are a combination of projects that improve system hydraulics, so improve flows throughout the system, replace aging mains, and then also we've attempted to coordinate work with your street projects that are coming up so that as as street work's planned, we get any infrastructure under the street replaced before that work's done. So our goal here is that we work with we work with city staff to come up with a plan and identify the projects, and then from there, this board adopts the plan, and then we start start working to the plan. So from there, we'll I'll let Ryan go through the projects. And as we're going through it, if you've got any questions, just jump in and let us know.
Yeah, I'm Ryan Gates. I'm with Cochran Engineering as well. We prepared some exhibits for you, like Dave was saying. If you want to take a look at our first exhibit, this is the one that says St. Ben water main map on there. We basically started with identifying all water mains in the system. So you have your whole system laid out on there. If you look at like the dark blue lines, those are the 2014, the dark blue dashed. Those are the projects that we worked on in 2014. And then if you look at the magenta dashed lines, those are the ones we're currently working on in 2020. So that just kind of shows you an overview of the system. If you look at the yellow lines, those will be your four inches and smaller lines that are in the system. Those are some of the lines that we'd like to replace as far as on this project. That's just an overall map of the whole system there. And then if you move on to the next map, these are the this is the water system improvement map. Like Dave said, we have projects laid out here for the next, you know, 10, 11 years here. So we started a timeframe from 2021 to 2032. So I was gonna kind of go through the prioritized list here. We we worked with Happy and Alliance here to kind of come up with some some of these prioritized projects. Kind of go through the list here. And this is this is what you guys have in front of you here. So starting here with project one, the highest priority, it was Fourth Street. This is also a road project. This will be replacing 3200 meter feet of four inch water main from Biltmore to Washington Street. And if you look at the cost there, that's we're trying to stay with around $300,000 for each of each of the years here. So this would be projected for 2021 project. So that would pretty much hit that whole budget for that whole year would be it. Starting here at Biltmore and coming down, there is a major creek crossing as part of that. And then it would go and tie back into Washington Street. Can move on to 2022. One of the items identified was having some backup generators for the wells. Talking with Steve, we decided that it would be good to have, there's four wells there. It'd have at least two backup generators to help provide. If those would go down and we lose any electricity, then we would have some backup. So that would be a project we identified there.
And that first project, Biltmore runs parallel to Washington, one block over. So you stand on Fourth Street is where you're gonna be doing it.
Biltmore doesn't run parallel to Washington.
No, I mean, Fourth Street.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I mean, the intersection streets, the short blocks there? Those could be small projects that we'd be able to take on.
So Biltmore is the cross street. Starts at Biltmore.
Yep.
It works its way down to Washington Street. It would start up here, and it would work its way down to Washington Street over there.
It just seems like it's gonna have to go on Robert or somewhere to get to Fourth Street.
Up by...
No, Fourth and Biltmore.
Up by Tony Grass, Ben Wiener's old place.
Oh, on top of the hill?
Yeah.
Oh, that's okay. That's Biltmore. Gotcha.
Yep, right. Project three would be Roser Street. That has been identified as a transite pipe section. So that would be a good section to replace existing Ford's, transite, we've got the six. And then Robert Street, that's another road project that we could replace the water main on that project. About 1,396 meter feet. Moving down to the year 2023, all of these projects are considered road replacement projects. So it would be good to get in there and replace some of these smaller water mains prior to some of the road projects. So Claymont Street is a small street. It's down south of town here. It's about 242 feet. And then Seventh Street and Ninth Street would be replacing four inches. The four inch water main with a new six inch water main. And then Oakwood was also identified as a road project that we could replace some four inch water main on.
Couple of those are the smaller projects that may be able to be completed in-house. That's what we kind of liked about those projects also.
And then 2024 project would be would be just one larger project along Main Street. Be replacing 2,700 feet of water main with new eight inch line. There also is a creek crossing on that one as well. And so that would be a good project. In our 2020 project, we're hoping to do part of main. So we would just continue on and then tie back in to our lineup south of there.
On that 2024 on Main Street, will that help remedy that problem we have every time we have a hard rain, it floods over by the, is this by the railroad?
Yeah, waterline project's not gonna fix the storm water runoff.
But this is just for the pipes?
Yeah.
All right. Wish I could figure out.
So yeah, so moving down to 2025, we have project 10. This was a project identified that some of the residents have experienced low pressure issues in this area. So that would be Maple Drive and Ridgeway. So that would, there's a four inch water line here. So we believe as we upsize that there, that it would help reduce or help increase some of those pressures there.
If I have a sprinkler on, I can flush my toilet again. That's the goal.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
No, the bad thing about that is all those streets are just re-done. I mean, do you dig in the center? Do you? Or I mean, is that?
I think we have to evaluate the, you know, go in there and evaluate each one of those. You know, maybe it's a situation where we get the mains out of the street and put them in the, there's a little bit of right away yards we could use.
Yep.
Maybe we could acquire easements from some of the property owners in that area. Hopefully minimize the disruption to the street.
How how did we set priorities for this meeting? Is that a is that a service degradation for the customers over there? And could that priority be bumped up? Or how did we arrive at putting that project number 10?
Well, as far as number 10, upcoming street projects, again, we're gonna run into it on Ridgeway, New Street. You don't want to dig the street up to the water main. So you want to put the street replacements ahead of, you know, a normal replacement. Right now, the customers up there have had their water pressure most of the time. I mean, it's still legal. It's not under 20 PSI. But they they are at the risk. I mean, they need, you know.
It sounds like an answer that everybody's good with, then, in my mind.
Definitely, though, if if anyone thinks the priority should be shifted on here, that's why we're that's why we're going through this tonight is to get input from the board to to make sure you agree with the way we had the plan laid out.
If we shifted that priority, that dollar amount is no longer valid, right? If that dollar amount would likely go up, the cost, correct?
No, I think the cost, the estimated cost there.
Right.
Yeah. It would probably be roughly about the same. Like, these are all just rough estimates of what we who we think. You mean, like, moving it up in the list of priorities?
Yeah, if we moved it up. Certainly, I don't have any any reason to lobby for that other than it does sound like a degradation of service, and maybe we should consider bumping that up. But I've had nobody contact me about that. Don't know anybody who has that thought process, so.
But you know, these costs all the way up to 2031, I mean, is there any inflationary number in there? Or is that just today's prices?
Yeah, it's based on today's prices.
So we can expect.
It could go down.
You know, and I was just wondering if there are the corner, I was wanting to ask you this, Steve. On the corner of Ninth, or Virginia Street and Ridgeway, there's two fire hydrants, like, just more of forest.
That was the waterline project where they they looped back in around down by your place.
Right.
They were supposed to remove one of those hydrants. Instead, they left it and tied a new one off, the new line. So they're both live. They are both active. What Bob's referring to is up there, there's two fire hydrants within five feet.
Something like that.
Yep.
They have options.
Yeah.
Then we can move on to 2026 projects. La Haye Street is a road replacement project. That's a longer street here. We'd do a replacement, 2,600. There's existing four inch, we'd replace that with a six inch main. And then the also, we're talking with Steve, that Maxwell Hill, the tank, it would adding an active mixing system would help with the quality of the water. I don't know if you have any to add to that.
What is that? That's the Maxwell Hill stand pipe at the top of River V Drive and North Ford.
Yeah.
The water, it only has a two inch line going in and a two inch line going out. So it doesn't turn over real fast or or turns over just enough. We have seen some water quality issues up there with some reduced amount of chlorine in the in the water, overflowing samples. We haven't had any, haven't had to pull any samples up there for triomethanes or halocytic acids or anything that forms in drinking water that sits. But that is, that's what will happen if that if that tank doesn't turn over or get mixed as it should.
Steve, do we have any situations, I know, like on Virginia Street and stuff? We had a dead end line and you did a loop system in there then? I mean, do we have any more of those existing now or?
There are a couple more. There are streets not looped. It can be, might be a little stub down there by irrigates and stupid all the bodies down there. They'll get flushed out monthly.
And I take it with all of these lines increased, there'll be increased pressure and the amount of fire or, you know, need for a large amount of water that'll help?
Yep.
Yeah, so all those projects, one through 12, majority, that's kind of north of town. These remaining projects are all kind of south of town, so it'd be improving the service south of town, so we can get some large remains coming down to the south here. So that would be Fourth Street, 13 and 14. That would be a longer run for 27, 2027 and 2028. So we could replace, there's an existing four inch, kind of leaving Market Street down here. And we'd be increasing that to an eight inch, that would just increase service all the way to the south. And improve the areas there. That's the same with 15, number 15 in the year 2029, getting Gabor Street and Main Street, replacing four inch, four inch line there with a 10 inch line. That would help your looping around the treatment plant. It would help get water moved to the south of town there. And then for 16, that was a small replacement project that we could squeeze into that year. And that that is a main that would be need to replace on Weiner Street there. Replacing forest line with a six inch line. And then the last three projects for the year 2030, along Highway 32, there was a need identified to have a 12 inch water main along. There's no no water main existing along Highway 32. So that would increase the redundancy in the region and help with circulation there on the south side. And then Progress Parkway would be the last two projects. And this was kind of one of the lower lower needs since there's not a lot of development out in this area. But connecting a main around Route M all the way to the existing line, that would also help with redundancy in the system and help the area around the storage tank along Route M.
So these, the other thing to consider with these these projects, like the projects out along Progress Parkway, by including this in the program, you're not committing to doing them. But you're you are putting yourself in a position, if development comes along that causes the need for this to happen, it's included in your program and you can proceed with doing the work. So we would, while we don't want to overload this with projects that we don't expect to happen, putting projects in that are likely to happen but not necessarily on a short timeframe, it makes sense to get them included in here. So that's something we did want to stress. We've got a lot of projects included in here. It's a large outlay for the city. By putting these in here, you're not committing, you're not committing yourself to doing them. But by having them included in the program, they will be approved by DNR and you can proceed with the work without the permitting that we that we discussed earlier.
So when you're talking about locating these lines, you mentioned something about doing easements and stuff. Well, on most of our city streets, we have service on both sides. So if you don't go in the middle of the street, how do you get to both sides? And if you go in the middle of the street, you're not only cutting the center of the street, but you have to cut every surface going into every meter?
If if not cutting up the streets in certain areas with a high priority, they contractors can push the services under. If you were to run down one side, they have equipment that can actually push the line under without without cutting the pavement. In some scenarios, that's pretty similar price, and some it's a little more expensive than doing pavement repairs. But in areas where that was critical, that's something we could definitely could definitely look at.
Because, you know, looking at Progress Parkway, you know, you like from Route M over, I mean, there is no development. You know, we don't know what possibilities are out there and stuff. So just whatever we do, we'd like to do with the mind that we're covering as many bases as we can.
Sure.
With as little damage as we can do.
Yeah, I think something would have to happen that's not beyond what you have right now to to talk about that Progress Parkway project.
Right.
So I think that's, you know, in working with staff, that's the projects we came up with. We're certainly interested in any input that you guys have. If there's projects you know about that we don't have included, if priority doesn't align with what you were thinking was priority, we'd definitely like that feedback also. You know, this, the overall supervised program includes an evaluation of your production facility. So how much water your wells can produce, how much you can treat at your treatment plant. We know no deficiencies were identified there. We evaluate the quantity of storage that you have. Again, no deficiencies were identified there. There is, the area we've been focusing on is the distribution system. And when we were authorized to do this work, that was the direction is that we wanted to focus on the the distribution system and replace the mains.
All right, any other questions? Take it home, review it. Got some suggestions or recommendations you can pass on to Dave and Ryan?
I had one other question. I mean, does any of this really deal with any possible future expansion in the city of yours?
We just progress on to the progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for all the hard the work.
All right, some other hard work has been with the park board that they're working on a park master plan.
God, is she back again?
And joining us via Zoom is Nick and Mary Dondu, who did much of the work. I'll ask her what to take it and I'll pass the books out. We do need these back.
So Happy's scanning out the the physical copies of the plans for you. I know you had a brief in the work system agenda.
What's the difference?
The color doesn't mean anything different.
Variety.
Add a little color to your line. As we know, I could probably stay here all night and talk this to death.
You'd be lonely.
Which is why a few weeks ago, I sent you all an email kind of outlining a lot of what's in this. So you guys would be a little bit more well-versed to talk about tonight.
This is fantastic.
Before I get too far into this, we cannot thank Nick and Mary enough for all of your work.
Thank you, thank you.
Without them, I'm not sure how far this would have gotten, so.
It wouldn't look like this.
It certainly would not look like this. Not if I had to do it. So we can't thank them enough, but.
And the history's really nice to put it all into context.
Yes.
I appreciated that.
Yes, so I believe Mary worked with Robert Wheeler to kind of come up with the history of the park to, which will help us when we go out to the community, just kind of reestablish how much this park actually means to the community and how important it is. So there's a nice history there. I guess as we dive into the maps here, and Nick and Mary, if you have anything to add at any time, just jump in by all means. I didn't, I didn't really prepare too extensively for this because everybody should be fairly familiar. I guess. Yep. Can you hear me now?
Sounds like a commercial.
Good. Okay. So I'm not blocking you here. So on page 10 here, you have a map, kind of the the overall summary of what we're proposing. So I'll just, I'm just gonna go through this map and kind of highlight what we've what we've got going on, what we're placing. We'll start up by the park house. That parking model, we look to improve that. There are no changes to the actual park house. Where the old city pool used to be, we're looking at putting in a splash pad with a playground, surface with a rubberized safety service according to safety standards for playground equipment.
What did you call it?
Splash pad.
A splash pad and then a playground, a small playground be adjacent to it. And then also up there, we're looking at putting in a large corporate style shelter that would have a pet kitchen, be great to rent out for events. It would also have concession stand windows. The proposal is to have two concession stand windows in there, one to face the the actual pavilion seating itself and then another facing like the hill that could potentially be used for events like winter sledding down the hill, maybe sell some hot chocolate out of it, or the soccer fields, some different things there.
Ashley, can I ask about, I had a lot of questions surrounding this, especially have you guys discussed, you know, would that be staffed by civic organizations wanting to make money? Would our city staff need to be responsible for cleaning and?
It would, it would be just like any of our other shelters. As far as discussion has been so at this point, it would be treated as any of our other, like, like our large pavilion over at Caskey and JCP Drive. That's available for rent.
Right, but it's also open all the time and people just use it.
It is open all the time, so this would be a rental essentially. Organizations, if they wanted to rent out the shelter, they'd have access to like a kitchen that might have a warming station, a sink, you know, basic prep stuff, nothing too elaborate. But that would allow them to serve hotter meals and stuff like that. But it would run like the rental.
Do we think we're gonna have to have a lot more city staff involvement with a facility of that type, especially when it comes to cleaning and checking it out at the end of the night to make sure all the, you know, rules and regulations have been followed?
I would say that there would be a set of rules established with the rentals. So there would be an expectation of cleanliness, you know, clean up after yourselves. There might be some standard maintenance head that we'd have to do. So just like our other picnic shelter, that's a that's rental. You know, we have to change the trash out and stuff like that. But I would see it running too much differently than our other rental shelters. There would be a list of expectations for the for the rental agreement. Would you compare on that, Nick and Mary?
Yeah, absolutely. What we've done in some other park rental facilities similar to that is you have a rental and then you have a deposit that the renters put down with those expectations. And if they don't meet those expectations, then you have something that you actually come back and, you know, hold them. And it gives them some incentive then to to do the cleanup themselves and then they get their deposits back. So that helps, that helps with the staffing process as well.
Yeah, and so this plan here, it's important to note out too, that this is really is a guide. Nothing's been determined as far as rules for specific amenities or design for specific amenities. That'll all come in further planning and discussions. This is just a layout to say this is what we want, and now we go out and figure out how to how to get it there. So also, the area that we're talking about right now, we're referring to it as the central core area. The idea is once this is developed, it's gonna be kind of the hotspot of the park. So that's where the the reference comes from. Across the street from the park house, we potentially look to put an amphitheater, something potentially for outdoor concerts or movies, things like that. Something potentially for outdoor concerts or movies, things like that. It would, the, there's a slope there on the hillside, so it would lend itself, potentially lend itself to what's referred to as a grade amphitheater, you know, that's built into the, to the, to the grade of the hillside with additional parking at the top there. Parking is an issue in our park when there is events currently, so throughout the plan you'll notice a lot more focus on the, on the parking additions. Let's see here. We'll go ahead and move to the active recreation area, which is going to be. So the active recreation area, soccer fields, not a whole lot of change with those. Yeah, they're, they're, like I mentioned on our plan, there's some cosmetic things that we can update. We can upgrade the, the bleachers, benches, add some drinking fountains down there. I think right now they're drinking out of the hose spout. So. We all did it, right?
Yep.
Let's see here. We got the, the T-ball field, we can potentially again update, upgrade some of the, the existing features of that, like backstop, bleachers, the fencing. A lot of that would be considered somewhat cosmetic. Also upgrading the parking area, there's parking area just to the, I guess, west of the T-ball field where the old waiting pool used to be back in the seventies or so. It's kind of a gravel lot right now, got a little U-turn shape, so that can be. Actually, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the wrong area here. The improving to the T-ball field would be where the old RC track used to be. Multipurpose court would replace the, potentially replace the tennis courts right now. With the community center having free tennis courts out there, it seems redundant for the amount of tennis that's being played in town. And from our survey, hockey was a pretty big hit. So we looked at ways of incorporating that. So the intent is to put a multipurpose court in with a focus on hockey down in that area. We, we see hockey growing in our community, so I think it'd be a great addition. No big changes to the basketball court, except for just resurfacing, restriking, adding accessibility. Walkways would be a pretty big theme throughout the park as the entire trails looks, looks to be upgraded. Potentially adding an adventure playground up on the, on the north end of the soccer fields there at the bend. An adventure playground offers more opportunity for older kids to play or to play a little bit more creatively through ropes and climbing. Built-in slides to the, to the hillside there. There's, there's a lot of opportunity for, for just some creative play with that. Some additional picnic areas, if you can shuffle near that. Updates to the restroom trail. Improving the parking over by the basketball parking lot. It's been gravel, but it's kind of growing over at, at the moment, so we look to actually surface that. I think that covers the, the big things there.
Yeah, I like that trail.
Yeah, the, oh, the trail's in there too, yeah. I'm getting lost somewhere, it's all I'm trying to. I've got what's in my head from the meetings and trying to sort it out here because I haven't had this physically over the week, so I'm, I'm kind of new to this actual booklet as you are. So the, the trail that's up there right now is just an asphalt trail. It's maybe two and a half foot wide and starts. It doesn't lend itself to multiple users at all and the, the inclines are really steep. So what's being proposed is to completely overhaul the trail, remove what's there. And you'll see on the larger map, there's a, a trail system that'll go through more intricately and pick up almost every amenity, offering access with meeting ADA standards for slopes and whatnot. This'll open up access to the park for the entire community. And then we'll, most of our amenities up there right now do not connect to a hard surface trail at all. The restrooms are out in the middle of a grassy area. Same with the basketball courts, there's no, no system to get you there without crossing the grass, so all of that will be updated by the trail. It's pretty intricate, so. And, and the improvements of the trail will also allow for, you know, users to shorten or lengthen their course as, as they wish. Right now, once you start on the trail, you're kind of stuck finishing it, so. So yeah, jumped ahead and talked about the central core area there on page 13 a lot. I think we got, we covered most of that. Disc golf course, there's not really expected to be any major changes to the disc golf course with the exception of potentially hole one, once the amphitheater is reconstructed, hole one would have to be reconfigured. But special core area would lend itself to special events. Like, like I said, it'd be the, the hotspot of the park for, for hosting or, or meeting up. And again, it just hits on the, the existing trail to be replaced. Might have to look at the utilities throughout the park and upgrading those, making sure water, electricity, or rain where they need to and upgraded cars needed. Nature areas along the hillsides surrounding the sink, both of the sinkholes or ponds, whichever you want to refer to, and technically the sinkholes. On the hillsides there, we'd look at potentially putting in some native planting that could help cut down on the actual mowing. There would be some additional upkeep, but it wouldn't be seasonally. And we would work with the conservation and other entities to kind of establish what those procedures would be for maintaining those types of plants so they wouldn't get out of control and become essentially weed patch. No major changes to the existing large shelter sites. Some cosmetic things. Painting some of the shelters, whatever color scheme is deemed appropriate by the park board. We'd want to keep those types of features consistent throughout our parks. Upgrading the grill area, putting in a playground with some rubberized safety surfacing. You see that in a lot of parks right now. Upgrading the back, the restrooms as needed to make sure that they're ADA compliant and accessible. Improvements to the parking lot. And then in the back of the book, you'll see our surveys. I believe out of the top 10 features designed most according to our survey, we're adding in nine of them to Pierre Marquette. The tempting, the one that we're not adding in is fishing pier. Nick and Mary, I believe, talked with conservation or it might have been Gary talked with conservation and those sinkhole ponds just won't, they'll turn over the fish too often and that fishing won't be an option. So you'll, you'll see our survey there. I think some of you might be familiar with the survey results already. There's some grants out there that Mary's informed the board, park board about that we can go after, especially for the trail. I believe it's an 80/20 grant where if, if we're awarded the grant, they would cover 80% of it and we would have the front 20%, 20% of the cost. That's true?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's, there's some different grant opportunities that we look at to help fund this.
Are we chasing any grant opportunities for the power, increased power requirements solar wise or?
I'm going to encourage the board to get on the internet, talk to people they know and seek out any potential grant that we can, we can use. So if you know of any out there, then by all means, you know, anything, anytime they can chase a grant to upgrade our park, we ought to seek the opportunity is my opinion. So I think we're still trying to get our bearings on what opportunities there are. So yeah, if you hear of anything like that, we could just pass it along and we'll try to chase it. Nick and Mary, do you have anything to add to my really rough?
You did a great job.
Again, I didn't have this, so it went out of order, but. Any questions y'all have?
Yeah, I'd like to make, you know, a couple of comments and stuff. As one, I didn't realize Dunsey Park Planning was an actual business till I seen the LLC here, but I also understand this was done at no charge to us.
That's correct.
Holy cow.
As I said, we cannot thank them enough.
I'm telling you, they need some special recognition for this and, and I would, you know, even with the best laid plan, I know there's always things that come up and I would hope we would take that into consideration if we have money to spend, that we go right back to these two people and practice good business and stuff, but I'm telling you, this is unbelievable and I want it all now and how can we try to get it done? You know, I mean, in, in talking about funding seriously and stuff, can we go out, I mean, private donations, business donations, I mean, this is a lot more than I thought and I mean, this is going to require a lot of money, but this is something to be very proud of, you know, as a community and, and, you know, in your experience, I mean, how can we get this and how can we get it soon?
We got the potential partners for implementation of this master plan in the back and there's, there's quite a list back here.
So there, yeah, there's, there's a list of potential partners in the back with different organizations that have, that have established themselves in the community through charitable giving, through work efforts. So we definitely, I'm definitely encouraging the board to seek out partnerships with community organizations to, to see how they can, how we can work together to improve these parks. This is going to be a big investment, no, no question. But I think what we're seeing from the pandemic is that it's going to be a worthwhile investment. We're seeing recreation increase throughout the community, throughout the nation. You can't find a bike in a, in a big box store right now, tamponings are gone, you know, but we're also seeing increased foot traffic in our parks. I drive our parks at least a couple of times a week and there's always somebody up in Pierre Marquette playing disc golf. I see the same kids coming up and playing basketball a couple of times a week, walking the trails, so our, Pierre Marquette is getting used. I know Valley Springs Park is getting used, so people are looking to our, our parks and anytime we can offer an upgrade like this, the tax payer wins.
You know, I know we've had a lot of support from one of the new businesses, larger businesses that came into the northern part of the community has done a lot of things like that, but I don't really see any commercial, you know, I mean, how do we solicit those and how do we get started, I guess?
And, and I think that's some, some questions that the park board has as well, just because many of our members have, well, I don't know if any of our members have really, with, with the exception of, we have the John Carroll on the board, who's worked in parks for his career, so he brings a lot of experience. So a lot of our members from the community that are on this, that have, that have lived here for a long time, they're not coming to the board with a lot of experience in this type of thing, so I think they're asking some of the same questions. So we're figuring it out, trying, we're having a special meeting on the 15th to further discuss next steps for, for this plan. And a lot of that discussion is going to be, you know, how do we develop a financial strategy? How do we reach out to corporate partners, nonprofit, local nonprofit organizations? How do we research grants, stuff like that? Also, what do we want to do, tackle first? You know, order of operations on that. So there's, there's a lot to discuss and of course I invite anybody to join the meetings. You know, I, I serve as the liaison, the communication, but that doesn't prohibit anybody from attending and, and helping establish this. So if you have partners that we can reach out to or valuable information, experience, the board will take whatever, whatever you can offer. This, this is going to be a, can, this is really going to rely on the community coming together to, to implement this successfully.
Because I think once this gets out there, once it gets out to the public, this is really going to make a difference.
Yeah.
They go to park board meetings for a long time. It's just been, it's been a wish, we want to do this, but we have no funds. Right now we have a lot of energy. Ashley's done a great job, all the park board members, some of the park board members have gone there for a long time. They're all excited about it and I think we've got some momentum building. That's why we want to get this foot together. This couple here has just done a tremendous job.
We're not going to reach into the park, I don't know.
And we're looking at Pierre Marquette, but we got, we got a lot of parks. We got Main Street Park, Regate Park, Valley Springs. We got, our park system is pretty big and recreation is huge.
I was on the, I was on the park board for a while and as liaison and this was, this was like a wish list and the Donzies, this was something that we were praying and dreaming for. This is amazing. Great job.
Once you have something like this, businesses will. There's a lot of work ahead and remember, this is a plan. Just like our, we just went through that, this is years of planning that's going to develop over the years.
One project at a time.
The harder we work, the faster we'll get it done, so.
This is brilliant.
Is this a Friends of the Park? Are they, is this an established organization already or?
It is registered. I think there's some restructuring going on, so at this time, it's not an active partnership, so without getting too, too in there, but, but they have some restructuring going on and that they've got to figure out before we can really establish that relationship and, and pound on it, so.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Amazing.
That's great.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. If I could add one more thing real quickly, this project is, has been an absolute joy and a treat for both Mary and I to work on. Of course, it's a passion and what we've done our whole lives, our careers, but with the enthusiasm of the park board in establishing that survey and getting the response that we got and a lot of that was through the park board and other people getting involved and getting that information out there to get people to respond, which was really critical and getting a good footing, a foundation on a good plan. But then in addition to that, you know, with Bob Mueller's help, with the park board's enthusiasm, with the city staff and, and how everyone stepped in and helped pull this all together, we're, we were very happy with the whole process and, and hopefully you're as happy with the end result as we are. we're, we were very happy with the whole process and hopefully, you're as happy with the end result as we are. And Mary's actually more of the planner than I am, but she was adamant in having, and she can speak to this, and having a document that you all can take and it can be used for years and years, but it also can be taken to the community to see what the potential of that property actually is.
Yeah. And so, as soon as this goes to approval by the board of all the men, then, you know, I believe we'll get a PDF with the actual signature page on it and that PDF will be released to our social media channel. So, everybody can share it, get it out to the community. I'm sure the Herald will cover it well. They have been so far. So, once this is approved, it, it can go out and we can get rolling on it.
So, how do we get it approved?
That would be the next meeting.
The next meeting?
Yeah.
Did we talk about it going to a resolution or vote? Either way, I guess it doesn't matter.
Well, what this is, this is an overview of what can be done with that park. Now, we have to get down to, what do they wanna see done first? And then we try to figure out those costs. Talk to the Dunseys about that. Maybe engaging them so that we can kinda come up with a game plan. But the Park Board has to decide first, what do you wanna do? We have an overall plan, but we need to start figuring out where we wanna go, just like we saw with the water plan. What are we, what are we looking at every year? So, we can start budgeting. We can do in kind, you can do fundraising, you can do grants. You just need to know what you, what areas that you wanna do and approve.
And while we're in, in talking about funding and options and stuff, if people wanted to make donations to the park through the city, as long as they earmark it for the parks, it stays out of general fund and we, and we, and we don't have to, is there like a form anticipating an influx of donations? Is there a form that we can provide any potential donations to earmark that would make it easier for filing or anything?
Pam can come up with something.
So, you're talking about, I'm sorry, you're talking, you're talking about if business owners or individuals themselves decide to donate specifically to this, it could be a tax write-off for them?
No.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a tax write-off. So, anytime a city organization fundraises, like if the Park Board wanted to have a fundraiser, that money would technically go into the general fund as from my understanding and have to be remount, rerouted to the park fund.
Okay, I'm with you. Okay.
By the, what I'm asking is if the donation, you know, if somebody comes in and says, I wanna donate a thousand dollars specifically for the park, that would remove the step of the board having to move that money.
Yeah, we can, we can work on creating something that would work.
So, if, but if an individual donates to one of these other organizations and they're not-for-profit, I'm just thinking about business owners and like myself and stuff, they donate to one of these other organizations, it, it would be a tax write-off.
If that, if that organization is, well, that and if they're wanting to work with us in that.
What's that called?
Five oh one C three?
Yeah.
Like, if you're five oh one C three, city is not, we're just a municipal corporation.
I, I think if your intent with that donation is to, for it to go to the parks, just make sure that, that nonprofit is communicating that that money will be, go to the parks.
I'm just thinking about a way to hit, hit up wholesome and the line, you know, how they can have a five oh three C.
Yeah.
What would be more of an incentive, is what I'm thinking of.
Yeah, for the, for the tax benefits.
Right.
Yeah, because that's actually sort of definitely helps motivate people.
It definitely.
It definitely does. And, you know, there is a Friends of the Park organization, but at this time, it's not a, no partnership. You know, we're, we're open to making a partnership. Again, they have to get their ducks in a row first. If that became established, then we can move forward with that because obviously, it's written in their name that they would be working on benefit of the park. So, but at this time, there, there's not a nonprofit established unless somebody, a nonprofit, we're kind of a process to do that. So...
Very much.
Get out of my seat, my turn.
I don't know if I brought up any extra papers here. So, if you, if you find anything that's not yours, send it back.
Thanks, Ash.
Thanks, Dunsey.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, next up, technology policy.
Will we be able to copy these in the future, in your future? I just wrote them mine.
We want them back.
We want them back because we're gonna have signatures in.
Yeah, they gotta come back, yeah.
Yeah. Will the board receive a hard copy after the signatures? Is that the plan?
Yeah, yeah. See, then it's a, then you have a...
So, Gary, just find yours, whatever.
How do I put my name on the table?
Yeah, do that.
Sorry, gang. There's always one in the crowd. It's always one.
Put Dr. Smith on there?
No, I just put Gary, old man.
But you can still join the fire department.
Right.
Still see him.
All I'm saying, feedback, y'all.
Ashley, that was fantastic.
So, we have the technology policy, which we handed out the last meeting. I've got a little bit of feedback on it. One of the things that, and what I've handed out to you that I've changed, it was brought my attention by Alderman Johnson, the social media section, which is T fifteen. You, you guys had already adopted something on social media and you, and I think you might, so I pulled out what we had written here and just referred it back to the personnel policy. I think that's the wisest thing to do. Instead of trying to just either copy it, it can, it can be in one, one document that we can always refer to. There were also some spelling issues and a few other things that we took care of, but if you have no other recommendations or anything else for us to consider on this, I'm gonna send it to Mark, have him review it, and then we'll bring it back as an ordinance.
Can, can you just clarify one thing we emailed about? And I apologize, I should've asked for clarification via email. So, when we have the person who is gonna inspect flash drives, et cetera, et cetera, you're gonna actually have someone on site working with the off-site system administrator to do that safely. It's not, we have to mail it to somebody and wait for them to check it out and mail it.
Yeah, we'll figure out a way to...
Do that internally?
Check that, check that. Because I know, I know, you know, usually you just put a program on a computer, you can download it to that and then they can do the scan and we can just have one person do that.
Okay.
We don't have much use for them right now with USBs and, and hard drives, but yeah, just in place.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Anything else? Nope. 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 Alright. Number four, insurance requirement for flood buyout property. So, we require that people sign a contract. I had Mark update it because it, there were some things in there I didn't, didn't think were current. So, one of the things that he included was, item two was liability and indemnification. So, we had a, he left it open as to what our dollar amount should be. So, I contacted our insurance company, our liability insurance company. Their recommendation is five hundred thousand. We just asked them to cover the city. We haven't given anybody a number. The insurance company is recommending five hundred thousand, but they're not, they're not saying you have to do that if you wanna make it less than that, if you think that people are going to balk at that amount. And I don't have a cost as to what it would be for a homeowner, if there's any, what the extra would be. Or they may already have that and they just put us on as additional insured. But before we start using this contract, we need to put an amount in there and I wanted to get some feedbacks from the board on what, what your, what your request would be. So, sovereign immunity is about four hundred and sixty-three thousand. That's in the chart, that's in the email that I included. Oh, I'm sorry, four hundred and thirty-five thousand. That's why they're saying five hundred thousand. Because then everything would be covered up to that point. I mean, people do a nice job to take care of those properties. They put in the gardens, they cut the grass. It's...
Depending on how much it's gonna cost them, we're gonna, we're gonna be taking care of a lot of that stuff then.
Potentially, yes.
Potentially, you know. I don't know what that is, I don't know what that, what they have. That's a kind of a slippery slope to be on right now. You know, I understand what we have to do, but if I'm taking care of a property, you know, I am, I'm gonna say, well, you can have it back, you know, depending on the use. I know the lady that up on North Main that keeps two or three of those properties cut. It's, you know, it's nice, you know, but I don't know if she's, has them insured with her home, you know. I, I don't know. If we're gonna require somebody to have, you know, insurance on it, you know.
But it, I mean, that five hundred is a big number.
It's a big number, huh?
You know, but your liability insurance is one of the cheapest costs on any policy and stuff, even with the biggest exposure.
Right.
I don't know. That would be a question for maybe some insurance agents. What do they see on most of their policies?
So, you're asking like, what would the average cost or burden be to the person?
Yeah, well, they're taking care of that property that...
You know, when they write a new policy for somebody, what do they normally suggest to the...
Do we have any idea how many properties that are, that people have?
Ten?
Ten, twelve? Well, it's not a huge amount of people.
But, but there's probably ten or twelve people that take care of the properties, but some of them take care of multiple properties, right?
So, would that be five hundred thousand per property or five hundred thousand per resident or caretaker?
I'd say caretaker because it would be, we would include all of the property addresses on one contract.
Okay.
And you're only worried about one thing happening in one location. It's not multiple locations.
I'm with the mayor. I mean, I like, I know, I know why we have to do this and I'm interested in figuring out what the burden would be to the persons doing it, but I also don't want the people who are really taking care of it well to balk on doing it.
Yeah, you know, they have to pay for that. Again, they're, they're, they already have an expense of taking care of the property that, you know.
And there's a couple that have been ruined.
Yeah.
And so, the other option is that we just require that they cover the city under their insurance and include us as an additional insured. It just depends on how much they have their house covered for. You may be exposed to some, you know, two, three hundred thousand dollars before we get to sovereign immunity.
Well, it's just hard to imagine, say, a hundred thousand dollar homeowner insurance policy bumping all the way up to a five hundred thousand dollar, you know, not saying, you know, nobody's house is worth more than a hundred thousand dollars, but, you know, that's a pretty big bump five times, you know, the total. I think that's something to explore before we, you know, of course, these numbers here are just provided by our insurance company. They're wanting us to be protected and to believe that.
And per, per Bob's comment earlier, would, would it be possible for us just to get an idea of what this might cost a resident?
It's the whole provider force, sure. And maybe, you know, they don't wanna give that estimate or, but I have not talked to anyone.
The average maybe, the swag?
It's hard to discuss without that.
Yeah, the idea of getting less mowing time, I don't think we wanna encourage to have four.
Correct.
No, just, I've been, just thinking of one property on Washington Street that's very well maintained and, I mean, it, it's super nice.
Yeah.
Well, North, North Main between Weiner and Division, there's two people take care of five properties. And that's why I didn't just do this out of hand and just say, this is what we're gonna do. That's why I brought it to the board for consideration.
Right. But this is something we have to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to have a contract. And we have some, some people that are, their contracts are up and some, I have one group that want, one individual that wants to take, take care of another piece of property. So... We're, we're needing to get this approved. I don't wanna use the old contract.
Have we had, ever had any claims on one of these properties?
Have they ever had a claim? I don't think.
And again, we can just require a minimum amount of coverage. It would just be with what's on the home. Whatever they have on their, their liability insurance, just add us to it and show proof of that.
I'm, I'm all for that, you know.
Yeah.
I don't wanna burden the homeowner. Somebody that's doing it, you know, they're...
Doing it well.
Yeah, making it, it's helping their properties too around it. It's making it nice.
They don't pay anything. What a dollar. How much is it to do, take care?
Is there an amount included in the contract?
So, I mean, do they lease them properties or how, how they do it?
Yeah, it's a, they just maintain it. Yeah, they cannot buy it because it's, you know.
But isn't like a dollar a year or something?
I thought, I thought it was something like that.
I think, I think it used to be where you had to have one dollar or other considerations. I don't think that's a requirement anymore. This is just, it needs to be taken care of. Or they wanna take care of it. Here's the regulations. I don't think there's gonna be a price. Yeah, for good and valuable consideration. There's no price anymore. Don't have to worry about it. I mean, did you want that dollar? Is that, do we need, do we need to include that since we're taking it off the fire tag, or fire permits? We gotta put it on?
Wow.
I went there, I know.
I mean, did you find out what the cost would be?
I can ask and find out some insurance agents.
Yeah, I'd wanna know what they're normally asking, you know, a new homeowner, you know, what they're saying is a normal amount. We're asking for three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, and then what that additional cost is.
Well, liability insurance on vacant lots should not be that much.
Well, right.
And that's what it is.
And it can't even have permanent structure, so.
Yeah. So, it's not like you're insuring a building that's on that lot. You're insuring that somebody might get hurt, basically.
And that's the expensive ones.
But a vacant lot should not be that much.
Okay, we'll get some numbers. I'll send them out, let you, let you see them and we'll look at them. And finally, trash haulers. Alderman Jokers had somebody request or wanted us to talk about whether the city would wanna contract with a trash hauler, because at this time, we just let all companies come in and everybody gets serviced as, as they want. You contract with who you want. A number of cities, the city contracts with a trash hauler and they pick up all the residential. Usually, single family, duplex and the rest of it's still commercial. So, three and four family and commercial do their own trash hauling. But the theory behind it is, you don't have as many trash trucks and you don't have as many days. Now, they're here Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and they get it all picked up at the, at the homes. You might have a few that go in for the commercial and for the apartment complexes, but there's not as much traffic on your streets as there is with just letting them all go to all over the city. I think, we talked about this, I think there's a rule though that you have to give them like two years before you can start contracting, because they have to be able to, they recover whatever costs that they've put into the service and then they know that it's going to be phased out in this city. I haven't, I haven't had a chance to find that in the, in the DNR code yet, but I'll see if I can find that. But do you wanna even entertain it? It was discussed maybe ten years ago?
Been a while.
I think we talked about it briefly last year.
I thought we did too. Well, now we got four trash haulers. And you might have those large trucks traveling that street, you know, at the same, eight, same street, you know, every week.
I don't remember that conversation last year, but is, is this a hot topic? Is this a popular?
No, I just had it. I've had it in my ward.
Yeah, I've gotten complaints about how many there are, how often they're going up and down the same street.
Where they turn around.
Yeah.
Because we would have to have somebody program manage, somebody would have to ride herd over this program, wouldn't you?
So, would that bill go out with the water bill?
Yes.
I think something that's concerned too is there's no real regulation on vehicle weight, whereas a commercial vehicle is, is bound by, by CMD to monitor their weight and axle weight, whereas trash trucks can load as much as they can load and the damage to the street has been a concern in the past.
Yeah, there is four now. Where it used to be only two, now there are a few more.
And it can be a lengthy process, you know, putting an RFP out there and getting proposals and making sure that you have qualified vendors.
Then you're telling people what they have to do. Right. I'm just telling you.
That's popular, right?
That's, that's really popular. Take away somebody's rights to whoever they want to have a trash. I'm serious.
What would, what would impact to your staff be? Uh, the phone calls we would get because it would be our... Yeah, but can you, can you quantify like, hey, I need X more man hours to accomplish this? This equates to a half a body.
This equates to a half a body.
It depends on the, depends on the day, the driver, what kind of issues you have. I would say upfront, you're probably looking at an extra five to six hours being dedicated by somebody when, when the trash hauler starts because there'll be so many issues and problems.
I agree.
That you're gonna have to get through, uh, and it will, if you get the right one, those will go away after a time, and then everything will smooth out, but you'll have occasions when somebody puts paint in their trash and it ends up on the street, or their truck has a leak, or the guy's doesn't smile when they drive by some people, and they get angry about that. And, you know, you'll have people, you know, are we gonna put the trash cans at the edge of the street? Are we gonna let them pick them up by the, by the garage? Uh, do you wanna have new cans that are just for St. Genevieve? Do you want, uh, you know, there's certain regulations that you're gonna be, that you'll include with this, that you'll have to watch over.
I mean, if, if you were given a task, hey, come back to us with an estimate of impact and cost. Like, you'll have billing expense, you'll have labor to do that and, and respond to complaints or whatever.
So you're saying if we contracted out by the city, we have to bill them?
I would, yeah, yeah, we're gonna contract. We need to, we need to regulate that. What it is, though, is you have a money in, money out. We don't give them more than what we get in, and that's part of the contract. Because if you say, we're gonna have two thousand homes, and we're gonna pay you that, you're probably not gonna get full two thousand homes, and then you're gonna end up losing money. So, I will tell you this, we would probably add an administrative fee onto that, like a dollar, and then, you know, that's another source of income that you have, but that offsets all of the, the work to put that billing together. Uh, but that's one way that you regulate it, so it's money in, money out.
That's what emulate the water program, right? Basically?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's on the, it's ready to be put on a bill. You know, that program is, is set up so that you can put trash on there, so.
So would a, would a resident have to opt into this?
No, it, it is mandatory.
For every resident?
Every resident.
So that might help on your loading of the city's trash container?
Meaning said resident could not contract privately for this trash?
And they would be charged regardless, so that would.
So if I don't have, if I take my, I'm sorry. Say that again? Say it again?
You said it'd be mandatory as in.
Every resident has to pay for trash service.
And I think that's the.
That's the key question.
Yeah, I don't pay trash service right now, you know.
There, there is, there is an ordinance on the books now.
You sold your other one down here?
No, no.
We caught him.
I'm taking over Randy's house.
We have an ordinance on the books now that every, everybody that owns or occupies a, a property has to contract with trash service, that has to have trash service.
How do we enforce that?
Well, I sent Alderman, or, uh, City Administrator Walter, a message during that conversation about the trash. We can contact that person. I mean, when we get an example of somebody that is not, that is causing a problem, then, then we can contact them and, and make them aware of the ordinance and that they are required to have trash service.
You, you would just know by complaint. That's the only way you would know.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, I came from cities where this was, I came from, you know, the Dew area where this was mandated. We had to have it.
Same here.
But, and I, but my residents here that I've been around for the past eighteen years, although I may think they need to have, pay for their own trash. I, I think we're gonna hear a lot about this, so.
You also have a big push to go green, and you have homes that are.
Ooh, speaking of.
That are going to virtually no waste.
Right.
So speaking of green, with the, with this RFP, RFP, quote rather, RFP, include recycling, could we actually, could that be an advantage? If we're gonna have trash, it's mandatory, right? Could we separate our recycling out like we did in the city?
Because by the time you take the recycling out, and you know, so there's people that don't have recycling as a service now, they physically take it to the center.
And how would that impact the recycling?
Their, their trash is maybe a grocery store bag every two weeks. Like, I know people that that's their trash, and it's, so to force them to take a service.
That they don't need.
Fill in a fifty gallon container.
I can see, I can see advantages, but I also see a slippery slope.
I know, I know people who pay a dollar a bag and take it out to the transfer station on A.
Yeah, that's probably a dollar bag.
They're selling the whole themselves.
What's that?
Then that is technically a trash service.
Yes.
I think the spirit of the ordinance is to keep people from accumulating a bunch of trash.
Yeah.
So.
It, it's not to be like, you have to sign up with a trash truck service.
Or using the city trash cans.
But if it becomes part of a city service, then it's everybody.
Everybody pays it.
I just don't see it, I don't see it going that well at all.
I would be, I would.
I, I like it.
I would entertain.
I would do it.
Regulations to the companies that we allow in our community, like, maybe there's a permit that, that a company has to obtain to, to offer a service here, and to obtain that permit, they have to let us know how often they're gonna drive our streets, um, make sure the choice.
I asked that a few years ago to a different court and got shot down.
To, maybe they have to check, check their weights on their trucks, or, you know. I don't, I don't, I don't know what those regulations would look like, but I'd entertain that type of conversation.
Well, that's also, people like, people were also like myself sorting out my recyclables, and then when my trash people came, who may unname, it just all went in the same place.
Yeah.
Buck, could we get some color around this? I mean, who, like, what? We've, i- in my mind, we would have to know, okay, this'll be the cost if the city runs this program, and then the, the average resident's gonna compare that and say, hey, if you're gonna limit my freedom of choice to contract out, then it better be cheaper and better quality than what I pay for the house.
And I better have the option to still be able to pour every, all my recyclables in one bin.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
Cause you know, you, you know, everybody's seen it, but we went from green containers to blue containers around town, and now there's a lot of light gray containers, because somebody who came in to pay with better races and stuff, now we've shot that.
Right.
You know, yeah, I, I, I like, I think regulating the companies that come in with weights and, you know, the number of axles or.
But, but are we looking for a problem, or is there a problem? That, I guess that's my question. How many people are hot on this issue? Are we out hunting for a problem here, or is there no problem?
How many roads are we tearing up? That's the real.
It's a big part of it.
Yeah.
A lot.
That's what kills the subdivision.
Yeah.
And, and the dealer on the gas or the brake, and then everybody puts their trash can in the same spot every week, and he pulls up and he gets a break and he's pumping that paint, and then once it breaks there, starts giving water, and he just starts pumping the mud up.
That's most of the problem sometimes.
Again, for the record, I'm all for this. I would sign up today for this, but my fear is selling this to my constituents.
Yeah, I, I have a, I can't go to my constituents and ask that some of them to pay potentially way more than what they already do, because like you said, you know, if you go out there and pay a dollar a bag versus paying, I don't know, I don't even know.
And I'm on the other end of the spectrum, even if it costs them less, some of our residents, you can tell them what to do.
Yeah, you'd be having more dumpsters, will you?
I'll be in the dumpster.
Yeah, no, that's a problem.
I'll be running my dump.
We got, uh, there was a, I don't know if this was written down anywhere, but they're not supposed to start picking up before seven, I think.
No, they're.
Yeah, I think that's in the solid waste code.
They were like, they were there in my neighborhood, just quarter after five.
And some of them need to wash their feet. Talking about children playing, some of those people come churning through.
Driver's law, a peace rate type of.
Well, yeah, I can, I guess so.
Well, again, do we have an enforcement issue, or do we have a legitimate problem that warrants government intervening? I, I'm always not a fan of government running anything.
I think you're in harmony with most of the people I know.
We're in government.
I'm not saying I agree or disagree with it either. I would love to have someplace come to pick up all my recycling, and I know it goes to recycling.
Yeah.
Um, like I said, I was paying for it, and it would be dumped in the same truck as everything else.
And, and one of the questions I have is I know when we do recycling, we have to, we have to break it out, so I don't know if there's a single stream of recycling.
No, I had to break it out, break it out, rinse it out.
No, we have a downstream, and it gets picked up every two weeks, everything but glass. It's a different day. They pick it up on a completely different day, so it's.
So, and then, yeah, so I will say, it, it doesn't matter, even if you switch companies, it is a, it can be a controversial issue. And I'm not trying to add anything on to city staff. I'm not trying to add anything on to the city, but it, it is brought up. There are a number of cities that do it, and they do it well, um, and you get the right company.
Can we get an example of a city that does that, and their input of what's went on and pros and cons?
Or maybe a city our size?
Yeah.
Cause I mean, St. Louis.
Okay, that's tough to do.
They own trash for.
Well, if you talk to Dew, Dew's like five thousand people, so.
Oh, well, there's a difference there.
Five thousand people.
It's a tight one, other municipalities.
Is, is the reason that it would be for everybody and not an often service, i- is that for, to make it easier on the administration?
To make it, to make it affordable. It, it's been, in my experience, if you don't mandate that everybody has to take it, then it becomes unaffordable, because you, you know, you get people opting in and out, and it's.
And we add one more vendor to the mix. If that's got people aggravated now, we add one more in the city, right?
So, so, okay, so Festus, we did the trash hauling. I, I put that out for bid. Harrisonville, we did trash hauling, put that out for bid. So I've been through this process.
And what were your feedback from the constituent?
We already had trash that was picked up, so it was already in, in play. It's just going through a new, getting a new vendor that was just controversial in itself, but.
I think you ought to have a town hall meeting, Abby.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what we need to do.
I can see where that's leading me to.
Let me know what day it is, and I'm not gonna be there.
What's your home address again, so I can register?
You suggested you run it.
That's, that's right, Abby.
We're all for it, but.
I've been to that room, but I'm not gonna share it.
So is there something we can do now, though, to make sure that, that the companies that are coming into the city are following the regulations? Or is there anything we can, I mean, the time, the time I've had to.
They have to have a business permit.
How many regulations do we have?
Is, if there's something about they can't start before five o'clock, why are they starting before five o'clock? If they're turning around illegally, can we?
I mean, unless we see them, unless the police department sees them, and, you know, has, you know, understands what that part of the code is, unless we get it reported to us, we, how do we, how do we enforce that? I mean, we can, we can remind them if they can't do that. I guess I'm blind. I don't see a lot of trash trucks in town, right? I don't pay attention, I guess.
Yeah, you're dumping yours downtown when nobody's looking.
And what am I gonna do? Go put a camera, huh?
Two AM.
Alright, we'll see what kind of feedback we get in the office at all. I go over to True Value, man.
I'd be all for it, Tom.
Alright, that's all I got.
You might close this session in ankle and knee.
Oh, yeah.
They got a big dumpster.
I'm throwing away it too.
I gotta, I gotta say that, I gotta say that.
I follow you.
Okay.
You started it.
Wait a minute, Buck said.
I gotta say, the new guy that's three P or whatever it is, he uses a three-quarter ton pickup or one-ton pickup and comes in and takes it to his truck wherever he's going.
That's good. Wow, holy cow.
Yeah, let's, yeah, there's another issue with that, but I won't get into, I won't get into.
That's been taken care of.
Yeah.
Good, good. Well, if there's no other business, uh, let's, let's adjourn, okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
Just a warning, there'll be, uh, I think, uh, next, our next meeting, we will have to have another work session. I know we've been wearing them out, but there's gonna be another presentation that's really gonna be good, involving recreation. Uh, I think they'll be ready to come to the board with some information for you all, so we will.
It doesn't involve me, so don't.
No, it's not gonna be.
I'm not here to talk your ear off.
Okay, so.